He flashed it this way.
What's her name?
Oh, baby.
Hey Hector, are you able to record in the recording? Does it also say who was attended? So yes, you can't pull that up?
Yes. Daniel, nice to meet you.
Of the participants and the attendees, is there a screenshot we can take or anything like that? Yeah, that'd be great. Yeah. Yeah, I'll leave that up to you. And if we could maybe just timestamp, that would be the only thing I would ask. Yeah, great. I don't even have a choice. I can't drink after 12.
Yeah.
Okay. Do we expect anybody else for this meeting? All right, so let's go ahead and call the Talent City Council Study Session to Order. Roll call please.
Counselor Colley.
Here.
Counselor Penomar. Counselor Greider.
Here.
Counselor Distis is not present. Counselor Fires.
Here.
Counselor Far Miller.
Here.
And Mayor Kearslet.
Here.
Mayor, you have a forum.
Thank you. Let me take this opportunity to welcome back Lucero, our city recorder who's been on leave for a while and we're really glad to have you back. Yeah. All right, so with that, item number two is Discussion on City Council Rules of Procedure. No, I'm sorry, I'm reading the wrong agenda. I only have three of them in front of me.
This is the right agenda, but it's the wrong.
Okay, well, it's the right date, but the wrong.
Finalized City Council Goals, Priorities, and Action Plan.
There we go.
That's what it should say.
So this meeting is on goals. It's okay. It's not your fault. Steph?
Okay, so there's a staff report with the item in the packet that was originally presented at the last regular council meeting, and I think you all have a giant version of the draft goals and priorities. And what I wanted to chat with you about this evening are a couple of things. One is, I've included in the staff report three, I believe the one, two, three in the staff report. In the staff report, what I see is the three top priorities for the coming fiscal year. And I'm suggesting that we take those three, create a box at the top of the larger document, and insert those as the goal priorities and actions for fiscal 2425. And then have the rest of these follow as longer range goals, longer term goals. So that's the only change in the format that I would propose. I think I heard at the last meeting that folks were satisfied with this format, but I wanted to confirm that. Okay. We've got some blanks to fill in in the format that we can work through. But I would like to start talking about some of these that I need some clarification for. And Goal One here, more housing stock and affordable workforce households. Looking at sub-items F, G, and H, seems to me that those are all components of D and E. When you do your Title 18, Title 17 updates, those are going to address those three items, F, G, and H. I believe.
I have some, I think that F will be addressed because it is mandated, but G and H were G and H were council-directed components. So maybe that's why they were separated out.
But there are already tree standards in the code. So it seems to me if we contract for the code update, those items could be incorporated in that scope of work rather than being separated out. The reason I bring it up is to see if we can incorporate those into D.
Can I ask if we could just make D finalized Title 18 to include? And just some sort of reference to those three bullet points?
Right.
Okay, great.
Now, I talked with the consultant who was working on titles 17 and 18 earlier today, Elizabeth Becker. She's not working on those now. I don't know if you were aware of that, but her contract actually expired two years ago.
Yeah, we were aware of that.
We would have to bring her or someone else on, the sisters with her.
We've just been waiting in a queue to see if we could even get her because she was on another contract. Yeah.
All right. All right, so I'll make that adjustment on page one. The next question I have is actually on page, page number, page three, Goal Four, Support Healthy Homes. Staff needs a better definition of that. I think Eleanor added that during the discussion. We really don't have any action items to that goal.
At the bottom of three. Communities.
On the right side of the purple page.
Yes, Counselor Penomar?
I think just kind of a shortcut to cross out the state grants that are relevant to the facilities probably to offer things like co-audit to the loaner community. This is very much why we're talking about and it's also something that I would imagine the city would definitely have this could be led by a non-popular situation. But the idea of having the city certainly aware, cooperating, planning whatever needed, you know, awareness there to coordinate. But not to really tend to be able to impact into it cooperation with it, but not something that I would wish
Would be more of an information exchange role.
But actually but that would be all maybe the student with five grand and hire consultants and there's also some of these grants, the webinar, you have funding for administrative oversight. So it would definitely be take somebody's time on staff that it would be off at the beginning of the budget. But anyway, so it's just another term to kind of help with the taking advantage of grants that are available.
Yes, Counselor Penomar? We're still in staff report.
Yeah. We just kind of jumped from Gary Adaska and his format and his brain, which I think is great, but I have some comments to add to it.
Yeah, I think we're going through, he wants to highlight a couple of things and then we're able to go through it, right? Yeah, okay.
So the next question I had was on the next page, actually, green page. And it's Goal One, Action Item D, which is, seems to be duplicative of an action item earlier.
Are you just talking about Goal One, Reduce Carbon Footprint, D?
Make updates to our tree code.
Yeah, it's redundant.
So we'll just incorporate that into the earlier.
Yeah. Are we to understand that if we incorporate it under updating Title 18, that it still will go through, like the necessary components will go through planning and T U F C respectively, like depending on what, okay. Great.
Okay, then the next page that I have questions on, the next two pages are the blue pages. Have a better greenway accessibility to talent. And these are mostly my, to gain a better understanding for myself. So I can kind of understand what the level of effort would be and what your priority might be. I'm not familiar with the Creel Road Connector.
Go ahead, yeah.
I was just understanding that Chris was working on that.
Yeah, it is adopted and it's just a connection from Creel to the bike path just south of Talent on the left-hand side of the highway.
This is connecting Creel Road to the Greenway. Yeah, a bike path.
Actually, I think we had, well, maybe not. I thought maybe we had a grant for it, but maybe they talked about getting us a grant and that just hasn't happened yet. But who was the other person? She was on Bear Creek Greenway for a long time and now she's with ODOT. She's probably with RV Act. Yeah, Gemma. Oh, she's not, okay. All right.
My next question was E, Improve Walkability. Just wanted to get your concept of what that means. Does that mean sidewalks throughout town?
The answer to your question though is that that yes, in part, but there are other pieces to it as well. And it really, I think if it were to, I think connectivity has been an ongoing important piece of that, of that particular goal, not just walkability, but kind of, you know, developing better connectivity. And examples of that would be like working to support the connection between Old Bridge Village and Highway 99, for example, and then also the Gangness, there's a walk-through what will ultimately be the Gateway Project, but making sure that there's walkability from that neighborhood to the next, because those are historically used pathways that could benefit from improvement.
So I'm wondering if E, F, G, and H on that page would rest better under a Goal Two, which would be Transportation System Improvements? Because the way it's written here is that those are action items to have a better greenway accessibility.
So resting under Goal Two, where is that?
It would be a new goal.
Goal Two doesn't exist.
Oh, adding a Goal Two, got it. Yeah.
Because improving walkability has something to do with the Greenway, but engaging more with RTD, RVTD, Talent Trolley and the Bus Shelter. I'm not sure what their relationship is with the Greenway accessibility. So maybe we have a separate goal there to improve transportation opportunities.
I like that idea. Counselor Penomar? What is?
Multi-modal?
Multi-modal.
Multi-modal. What is the Talent Trolley?
Yeah.
I can't remember that.
That was my next question.
This is an Eleanor.
I did not expect that to go on the national, but I said, it was something they could add together for talent. Another city has done it. It's just planned together.
Would you consider a friendly amendment to Talent Trolley to to F where it says engage more with RVTD and add to that Route Seven, which is a conceptual route that starts at the train station or sweetbeat and goes through the west side of town and collects and brings people back. So there's long been a Route Seven in their plans and maybe just helping to support that, which by the way, the depot, that's part of that history of Route Seven, getting a grant with RVTD in partnership with them for that very purpose.
So Route Seven is a desired route, but not an existing route.
Exactly. It's a planned route. It's just not an existing route. And so maybe rather than Talent Trolley, which seems a little more remotely possible, working to get Route Seven going with RVTD and just incorporating that into Goal F.
Yeah, I think that, I do see the most like different things. The Talent Trolley is kind of the idea of like a Sunday thing, very limited, where it kind of looks like it's not a perfect mechanism. I like seven, it's in more concrete and
Like the Jacksonville one?
Like the Jacksonville one, right, yeah, so it's more of a media thing. You know, but I'm fine changing it.
Maybe we can take Talent Trolley to some of the some of the downtown events or something and start it that way.
Next.
Yeah.
The next one I have is Bus Shelter. Is this a singular bus shelter or bus shelters?
It's I don't get that impression. I think we only have one, I believe, one shelter in town that can protect you from the rain if you're waiting for the bus. So I think it was bigger than just the Cobb one. Yeah.
Those are more bus shelters.
More stuff, yeah.
I think I remember that they're the property of RVTD, so they should probably at least be listed on here as a partner.
For sure.
Because when we did research about that, I remember that. And they seem, you know, I mean, isn't it Talent has more bus stops than any other city of our size?
Used bus stops.
Used bus stops. But yes, only one that actually has covering.
Yeah, Counselor Greider?
Is the status of the Cobb Shelter in the hands of RVTD at this point just?
Yeah, my
We haven't talked to them about it in a very long time.
My understanding is the person that was the driving force of that is taking a break for a period of time, working on another project, but plans to come back to it.
Okay.
Yeah. Just as a point of information, RVTD also has a the, of the density, you know, just like the amount of use in the different stops. Like it's really a neat study and it just shows, you know, this stop is used this much indicated by a circle this size and this one is used this much indicated by a smaller circle. It was a great graphic. It was very revealing and it might help inform projects like this, so you know.
The next page, I've got Goal One. How do you feel about combining Items A and D?
A and D?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. And then on the bottom of the page, I think we've had a discussion about using Talent News and Review essentially as the city's newsletter. So do we still want to consider publishing a quarterly newsletter?
To me, it seems redundant. It seems like additional information could be added to the News and Review, and the News and Review relies on our business to be viable. So it seems like we could do maybe a hybrid of that. Counselor Colley?
Are the News and Review articles posted to the city's website already? And I'm assuming they could be, because that would be another element that I feel would be important to that. I know everybody gets it nailed to them, but it's more accessibility.
I think the flash is produced, is presented on the website. Yeah. I mean, I, to me, they're not mutually exclusive. I think we could still, is it too frequent to do a monthly flash? Is the staff feeling like it's too frequent to do a monthly flash? Or is it a monthly flash and a quarterly newsletter?
Hector, how frequent is the flash article?
Yeah, so I'm asking, is there any feedback from the staff that doing a monthly flash is too frequent? Okay, that's, that's good because I think it's really a great service to our community. And when you talk about also publishing a quarterly newsletter, are you talking about publishing it to some other place besides the besides the Talent News and Review? Is that kind of what the thought is?
I think the discussion was either or.
Either or, but not both.
Yeah.
Got it. Yeah, I don't think the council ever, I don't think the council suggested the water bill. Yeah, gotcha.
Okay.
Seems redundant and, yeah.
Okay.
And expensive, yeah.
And then the one above it is conduct door-to-door an event survey.
Counselor Penomar? The team.
Yeah, under team.
What was the question?
There's a key at the bottom.
Oh, sorry.
New engagement.
Yeah, yeah, it seems to me that that was a, that was a rollover from the previous year that I think Jordan wanted, presented, proposed that as a potential, yeah, potential means of gaining better relationship with residents, the city staff and residents. I'm not certain.
So what?
To me, it's a capacity question for you guys to answer more than anything. Counselor Greider?
Because there's also the under Goal One, the C, Together for Talent Survey. So I was curious when we were on that one, what that entailed.
when we were on that one, what that entailed, but.
And I think it's, I think the educator put together the talent with, with, um,
Goal one, goal one C.
Goal one C, yeah, so three A and one C. And those were six.
Yeah, I think they're both holdovers from the previous goals, goal setting. Yeah.
Or it could lead.
Counselor Fires? Yeah, it does seem, again, I, I think this was an idea that Jordan had, but it does seem more appropriate to have appointed and elected officials in this engagement piece than, than staff. But I don't know what the motivation was, so. Right?
Yeah.
With tabling and surveys and stuff that you guys have done before. Yeah, great example.
Maybe, maybe project specific surveys.
Yeah.
So do we need goal three at all? Especially if we're taking away both action items under it. I mean, it seems like it could be a little redundant with goal one.
I agree. I think we can just take it out.
While I was in Ashland, the city did a city, or craft in the citywide survey on, on city services to gauge the community's thoughts on what essential services were, whether they would be willing to pay more for certain services. I think it took four months to agree on the question. But, and then the city contracted with SOU to actually do the, the survey. They wanted that independent party.
That makes more sense to me. Where we, where the city has a few projects where they want to get more broad feedback and decide to execute a survey. I can think of a couple of things that I know that you've been talking about and Tessa's been talking about. They do, you know, different, different financial concerns that we'll be looking at in the year, upcoming years. So maybe not as a standalone goal, but maybe just as a, as a strategy to some of the goals.
Yeah. Could be part of the strategy on the financing.
Yeah.
And the very last one that I had a question on is on the last page and there's an action item under goal three, assess water rates and adopt water rate model. Can I take it off the list because it's done?
What page is this on?
The last page.
Are you, okay, Sustainable Foundation?
So this is just an extension of the work that we've been doing this last year, right? Where you would actually create a model that, that paces better than the one that we have, which I think there is a model to try to keep up with rates, but I think it collapsed when, over the last couple of years, when all of that inflation happened, right?
Right, so you, so you've adopted a new rate program for water.
So is that, so there's nothing more than what we've already done to this? So it's really just a scratch off?
Yeah.
Okay. We did it, yeah.
Tessa did it.
You accomplished, you accomplished one of your goals. But then I, I was going to combine, this is really minor, combine C and D. Because really in order to update the fees, you need to do the cost of service.
So is this, this is above and beyond the water? This is all of the services?
Right.
You know, I, I have to say, this room is so echoey. It's, for me, it's hard to make out, sometimes make out the word that being said. It's all right. I just, I'm just giving you the same, I'm giving us all the same feedback. Somebody said in the last meeting, I think, is it the, you know, the room is so echoey. So it'll be for C and D, you're proposing for all of city services.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, those are all the comments I had. So.
So now do you guys want to just go through? If we're going to go through the goals in order that they're laid out here, I would hope that we would start with the three goals that are in the staff report, just so that we can go through those and hear from you a more fleshed out idea about that. Counselor Penamriff?
Is that like this year we just concentrate on all three of these goals, do a staff report and back burner everything on this one?
There are some things we can continue to work on, on the master list, but let's not get distracted from the, from the
The three main.
Getting the project underway and getting the city's finances.
Okay, so I was responding to what you said earlier about wanting to go through the goals, but were you not wanting to go through these? You wanted to go through the. Maybe you were in the beginning referring to the three goals in the staff report. I don't, I just want to make sure that I'm, I'm covering what you want to cover.
I'll just say that overall for this document, which is, I love that we, when we put partners, when we're at the various posts, and what I've tried to do from looking at is how much, how many hours we're going to take to run that. It's kind of what I'm trying to do from it. And also how far along is somebody that's in thought of that? Anyway, that's, that's probably more detailed than, but in a spreadsheet that we have supporting documents, we don't know what project. Didn't answer this question to kind of just conform our understanding. But that's definitely not a big deal yet.
Yeah, and to update this periodically, I mean, we could insert in the status line, for example, update building lands inventory. We could even do kind of a little bar graph there that would show you the progress where we are.
The last thing I wanted to say with regard to all of this is I still have the work that you've been doing as far as getting grants. I went to the budget meeting with, moved out of tour service mentors and made the common brands and the available loans. If they're able to get, they're, they're in pressure.
Yeah.
And I, I hope that, that you can start to make that a part of the, for some of the, for some of the goals. You can advantage of the grant.
Yeah, okay.
I, that's, yeah, that, just to refine that point is, is looking for ways at one, some point in time to review these goals in order to discover whether or not there's grants to match it to and maybe doing that periodically. Which I'm sure is built into your, your, your process, Gary. I mean, it seems to be already. All right, so is there, do you want to go over more closely the top three goals?
Okay, so by now you've probably read the budget message. Hopefully. So we need to develop a short term and a long range financial plan to sustain the organization and identify what the right size of the organization is. And basically we have fiscal 2425 to do that. Before we come up to a point where the revenue and expenditure lines cross in a bad way. So that's what goal one on my staff report is intended to do. And that is to do the cost of service studies, get the fee schedules updated, under, do a public process to take a look at law enforcement funding options. You'll notice in the budget document that the, that the police department budget consumes the entire property tax revenue of the city and more, which in small cities is not unusual. But in other small cities, they are fortunate enough to have other other financial resources that they've built up over the years. We can't do it all in a year, but we need to start it. So that's what, that's what that's about. Continuing to evaluate alternative methods of providing service, taking a look at staffing. Now what services can we continue to provide by going within less costly options for providing those services? Some of those decisions might be to bring an expensive contract service in-house. Some of those might be to take an expensive service and outsource it. So it's going, you're going to see both of those activities as a part of this year's discussion. Now we're in this period when we're talking about reducing expenditures that's, that may, you know, affect departments and may affect employees. It's hard to recommend approval of discretionary funding. It's hard for me to recommend that. You'd see that on the council agenda tonight where the urban forestry committee requested a comparatively small amount. But as a custodian of the city's finances and looking ahead in the, in the financing in the future, we can't really, in my view, we can't really continue to approve financing, spending discretionary funds in excess of the amount that we've budgeted for. So that's, that's a concern I have. So that's, that's what this talks about is holding, including some discretionary funding in the budget, but not as much as we have in the past.
Is that part of the goals or we have, is that part of the budget discussion?
That's an action item. It'll be part of the goals.
Okay.
This year. Looking at alternatives for employee benefit programs. As Tesla may be able to talk with you during the budget discussions about the cost of some of our benefit programs and there are options that we need to look at that could help in that area. Delaying new initiatives that would require new general fund expenditures. And and then move into working more aggressively on the economic development program that includes a strategy for increasing and stabilizing the city's revenue base. So this would help refocus my work for the coming year. And there, as we go through and make some adjustments in how we currently provide some of the services to provide actually additional resources, but more cost effectively.
Can I ask, can we ask, start asking questions on that first section since we've gotten through G? I know you raised your hand on a question. So I'll, mine is late in the list, so I'll, I'll start with you.
I just wanted to say, undertaking a public process to explore the law enforcement, there is that study that we've done. I don't think we have discussed it as a council. I just wanted to officially on potentially, you know, controversial issues. I think it's really important that, and when you deal with financial mechanisms, they're not necessarily well understood by everybody. I think it's essential that the council and staff make sure that we're all on the same page.
Yes.
And that we're thoroughly informed and that we can frame whatever conversations we want to bring to the public in a way that makes sense for trying to, you know, theory. And so it doesn't kind of squirm into a larger conversation than, than what we need, especially.
We certainly need to bring that to you for review first. And get, embed it through the council. Make sure we're not taking proposals up the flagpole that will, that in your view would never work.
Yeah, to that end, I think that in a conversation, what are the financial mechanisms that are, are we talking about taxes? Are we talking about revenue fees? Are we talking about grants? All, all of those things for, you know, law enforcement, there are other options. We can broaden it, other, other, things like that. So just to make sure that we kind of have a thorough conversation before there is even a thought of like, you know, forward.
Any other questions? I wanted to ask about develop an economic development program that includes as a priority, a strategy for increasing and stabilizing city revenue base. That sounds to me like two strategies, one being, one being an economic development program, which is, is very helpful in increasing and stabilizing city revenue base, but also looking at housing development and how that impacts. And so you know, housing development really has, especially when we're looking at, when we're standing at a population of 5,200 people. I think it's still 5,200. Is that the last count we had?
Right.
54, has it gone up to 54?
And it was, as of April 16th, they, they, I think it's 5,400.
Yeah, so losing 20, it's still, still at a 20% loss of our population. You know, just looking at housing development as impact to city revenues. I, I think we need to do both of those things and, and I, and I think we need to do them as separate line items. To me, it is a little, it, it's more transparent, transparent to talk about economic development as an economic development strategy and then housing and its impact and revenues separately.
And, 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 and looking at housing, do we need, I think we need to look at it in terms of a couple of things. One is it's bringing more people to the table to do their shopping and such in town. But we don't have a revenue stream from shopping in town.
Right.
Our revenue stream is the property tax.
Exactly.
So we need to look at the type of development that's going to generate property.
And, and where, where that, where that happens. And I mean, I know that we're doing that with the buildable lands inventory and as we look at TE4 and TE5 as, as some of the solutions for that. I, I definitely, yeah, I, I, I guess what I, let's see, to be more clear about what I'm saying is that to me, G is less about commercial economic development because it doesn't have the revenue impact that we need in our city as much as looking at housing and balancing that with affordable housing and looking at affordable housing or workforce housing that does generate tax revenue, that kind of thing. Those are the kinds of things I think that we all need to be educated on and through study sessions as part of G. More emphasis on, on the revenue. More emphasis on, on the revenue that housing brings and, and certainly some, but not a lot of emphasis on, not to say that we shouldn't have an economic development strategy because one supports the other, but what you, you gotta have an attractive, uh, great community to bring in the housing, that's to me the real purpose of it, but am I making sense, like, I, I wanna, I wanna create a, a, a specified goal for that.
Well, yeah, and may perhaps have a, perhaps include in that, a discussion as to whether housing actually pays for itself.
Mm-hmm.
And services. Do, do the, do the revenues that are generated by housing pay for the services that that housing demanded? Might.
That's a great analysis, I don't think I've, anybody, I don't think any city manager that I've ever talked to has brought that up in this city, that's a great analysis. Um, but I think that's the, the birth of the fees, I just wanna say, um, go ahead, Counselor Panamoriff.
Because that especially means I should also investigate other, other apps that staff.
Oh, for sure.
Yep.
All those things, we're educating.
Right.
Do not should be.
Here's what the options are, what are we generating?
Say that, um, you know, how, there is.
There is.
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry, go ahead, finish what yours.
There are certain types of affordable housing that there is.
There's subsidized housing, doesn't have, um, doesn't have property tax, but yeah, like affordable and workforce in the house.
Yeah, so just knowing all of these.
You know, I wonder if, um, so in, in, because you brought up probably the other half of the conversation just in one sentence, I wonder if there is, um, just a way to word this to just, just to, just say across the board, review all strategies.
Yeah.
For increasing and stabilizing the city's revenue, yeah.
Get a master.
Yeah. I mean, I, I would imagine between you and Tessa, you guys are gonna know what the lowest hanging fruit is, what's the highest yield, et cetera, et cetera, and we would start in those areas. But I do know that, uh, I do know that that is the charge of this coming year is to look at revenue versus and really just our, just our inability, I mean, just, we haven't raised revenue in a long time in this town, and it's time to, to really look at that.
Or two? The, uh, that one's obvious, it's a, it's my understanding that it is a high priority for the city. Uh, it's a project that's actively being pursued, um, uh, and I think we're aggressively pursuing it. Um, but it needs to get done. So that's, uh, this is telling, telling me, telling the staff, telling the community that moving this project along is a priority for this year. There are dates coming up with respect to, um, uh, the management contract on the property. That, Mary, you're aware of a whole host of issues that need to be addressed with respect to that property, and this is really a key year.
Uh-huh.
Great, I'm seeing. And if I could move along to three, we're running into time here, uh, is, uh, in the four months I've been here, I have, uh, encountered a definite absence of written policies uh, in a wide variety of areas. Um, and, uh, yeah, it's, I find it uncomfortable making policy on the fly, uh, but I've had to do a lot of that recently, and that, and, and you shouldn't be relying upon, um, a new city manager or any city manager to be making policy on the fly, but these should all be well-established. I understand that there were some, uh, policies that were established, uh, some years ago. Um, where they are, we're still tracking. Uh, if they were, they probably need to be, uh, updated. Uh, and, uh, particularly in the area of, uh, of some of the finance, uh, items, um, but, I'm, I basically receive what's the policy on X questions every day related to personnel and use of public facilities and, uh, facility maintenance, financial management. Those are, we've got a number of things that Tessa and I are eager to put together uh, and are really needed in order to form the, um, administrative base uh, for the city, would lighten everyone's load, uh, and allow us to concentrate on, uh, things that are not coming in off the wall. So, um, that to me is an important aspect of something we need to get under control now.
Can I ask you a question about this?
Yeah.
Um, cause I, you and I have discussed this before, and I wanna share this, uh, i- i- within the group. Um, I'm frustrated by the fact that I know that policies exist that don't get brought to light, and sometimes I think, uh, it's easier to ask what should we do about X rather than, you know? I, I, I can't even imagine where, um, wh- what the organization looks like in the departments where these policies are not centralized in some way. Um, I, I just don't understand that, so, um, and as somebody who's worked on policies over the years, and I've said to you that if there was ever a question about a policy, I bet there's a reference to it somewhere in my email, cause every email is still there. Um, so I wonder, um, if there is value in, um, the goal being to first organize and codify the policies that we have.
Yeah, exactly.
And then, and then look at where are the gaps, what needs to be modified. Um, I think that almost every policy that we do have is functional, and, um, and as, um, as, you know, it's, it, as a means, it just doesn't read that way when we look at the, um, when we look at this goal, it looks like, uh, it says establish written policies and procedures on a variety of matters, and, and what I would hope that this, we could reword this or refine this a little bit to say, um, to work on, you know, gathering and, and codifying the policies that we do have. Um, and then working on, seems to me that from there, a matrix of the policies that are ne- that are abs- that, that are needed, absent or need amendment, um, would be the next phase of that approach.
Okay. Amend or create, put a, put a, make A, gather and codify existing, and B, amend or create for gaps exist.
Is it possible that, I mean, I've been in the, the, I, what, I don't know what room that's called, I just have actually seen it recently, um, where all the boxes are.
Yeah.
Um, is, is it possible that that's where they live, I mean, I, I, is it really gonna, is it that cumbersome where we, where somebody would have to go through boxes and?
I don't know, I, you know, I, I've found bits and pieces of policies in various prior city manager emails uh, in different folders within the city system.
Um, there's also policies that are attached minutes.
Yeah, uh, and one of the, one of the, I don't have a specific example to share with you tonight, and it's not intended as a, as a criticism, but there have been some policies decision, decisions made as minute orders that, um, essentially are voted on by the council in the past, that don't make it into any document. You have to go research the minutes to find it.
So you're saying that there have been policies that have been adopted, they're recorded on the minutes, but they're not in a policy document?
Yeah, they're not in a resolution, they're not in an ordinance. But there's, they're, they're not in an administrative regulation, they live in the minute.
So in addition to codifying, in addition to the project that you're talking about, I would ask the staff to also create a mechanism that allows us to somehow be able to have that information as well. And, I mean, we wouldn't know that, we don't know what happens once it leaves us and goes to the minutes, that's the, that's the further star access is really, unless we need to go look for the policy at some point in time.
Yeah.
Um, so, so maybe it's, um, as part of our policy adoption, I mean, I'm just trying to think of some sort of mechanism, and I wanna build it in now.
Well, it, it's the resolution is the mechanism.
Well, right, but then, but then what is, um, you know, what is the? The, maybe it's a inventory once a quarter of the policies and where, where the, where they ended up, um, or how they ended up. Uh, maybe it's a checklist at the end of every quarter that shows that they made it all the way through, I don't know, but some sort of mechanism that we can, can look at it from an accountability standpoint. Um, I would imagine we've reviewed city managers for great performance on the administrative side when there's policies being lost all over the place, that's how it sounds, do you see what I'm saying?
Yeah.
And without a, um, without, without some sort of review or calendar or mechanism or checklist at some point in time, it's impossible for us to know that. So.
And there are, there are, you know, there are, in the day, day, day operation, there are policies that the city manager makes, administrative policies, internal policies. Um, uh, a- and those need to be documented, I, I am used to documenting that in the form of, of an administrative regulation. You know, mundane things like, uh, how to lock the front door, or, uh, you know, other procedural things that we need to have documented.
Those are like procedures, right? I, I, I guess I'm, I'm not saying how to build it, I just, you know, from an accountability standpoint, when we're doing a manager's review and we wanna know that everything is codified and put away, how could, how could we review that? Uh, is there a tool for that, Council Fire?
Mm-hmm.
I think that.
Yeah.
What they, they're, what, do they talk about? I mean, so, we, we, we always go after one topic, so they, anyway, but then what happened to that? I don't know.
Yeah, I think, uh, essentially what you're talking about is a kind of a policy audit, let's go back and find when it was adopted, um, a- a- and, and bring those forward and get them into the binder on the shelf that when the person walks in the door, you can pull it out, and you don't have to look for it, or ask the senior employee what the policy has been. Yeah. Yeah. Well, that's gonna hit on what I see as our, uh, priorities for the coming fiscal year.
Well, it's no surprise, I mean, it is sort of what, uh, you presented to us when we were interviewing you, is that organizational improvements is, is one of your hallmarks and, um, of your career, and I, I look forward to seeing, seeing what that looks like. And it sounds like this year is where we're gonna see a lot of that work get done.
Yeah.
Or started anyway. Great.
Yeah. Thank you.
Any more questions about, yeah?
Pizza's here.
What's that?
Pizza's here. The pizza's, the pizza's.
Oh, pizza's here, yeah.
Thanks for that discretion.
That's right. It's in the council budget.
Yeah. Are there any other questions on any of this? So will this be, um?
It'll be.
Formatted?
It'll, it'll be inserted on the top of this document. These are the three top goals for the current fiscal year.
Yeah. Great. Alright, so if there's nothing else, we're gonna adjourn this meeting at five thirty-eight.